With the sweater, you kind of looked like. That was feedback. You kind of look like Rizzo.
Like Rizzo? Like from, from Greece?
Yeah, from Greece.
Just like her.
Sweater, you were chewing the gum, like you're Rizzo.
I'm eating popcorn.
Okay, popcorn.
That's my dinner.
I'm leaving. Did you just? So you, did you call in on audio? Lisa? Yeah, you. Yeah, so you got us, you got to star nine it, I think. On your phone, I think you have to star six or star nine, whichever unmute it, because you're still muted. Yep, see you talking, can't hear you. Not that good of a look reader. Dale figured out how to unmute himself.
You hear me now?
Yeah, so you unmuted. Oh, you heard me say star six, didn't you?
Uh, no, I just hit the little mute button on my icon.
Oh, there you go. Now she figured it out.
See, now it's all good.
He's fancy, though. She like called in a video on one device and audio on another. And then linked them.
The microphone doesn't work on either my camera or the hard drive.
I'm proving that I'm here.
See, he's really here. He didn't blow it off.
I'm kind of surprised by that.
I'm over here doing work.
Is that what we're calling it these days?
As far as you know.
Iced tea.
Mango Pepsi.
Alright, I'm gonna mute myself again.
Alright, I'm gonna do this, and I want you guys to see if you can see the presentation. That's not what I wanted to do. Escape. Share screen.
I'm sending another one that I sent this morning to you.
Hold on. It's going pretty well so far.
This is smooth. Yeah, it does.
If I hit this button.
It's got an even bigger blind spot when I shut it off.
Did you get one that I just sent you?
And then I go back here.
I sent it to Mel on his.
I do this.
I did.
Alright, what do you guys see on that?
Significant general fund.
Now I go back here, could do this. Oh, is that the beginning?
Click on the inbox, really.
Yep.
That actually worked, okay.
I'm gonna sit all the way back here.
Alright, I'm letting the commissioners in, be good.
Hey, Mike, I don't have any audio from you.
That's because I was muted, so you couldn't hear me.
Definitely working out.
Hey.
Hi.
So. Everyone, Quentin is gonna take over for the beginning of the meeting, because I have a concert. But I'm going to join, and then I'll join fully the meeting. After that concert, okay? Sort of the pop-up things that happen in my job, so. I will, I'll have Quentin lead, and then I'll join later. Alright.
Okay.
Sounds good.
We, are you, were you gonna open it?
Well, I can open the meeting for sure.
Open the meeting, then I'll do my best to screw it up afterwards.
Okay, good luck with that. Do we have people to let in?
There's nobody in the waiting room right now.
Okay, and we'll let people in if they join. Alright, this meeting of the Livingston City Commission is, this budget meeting workshop is called to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Chair Hogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Present.
Commissioner Freeman?
He's working on it.
Commissioner Maybe? Commissioner Noots?
Here. Alright, so Michael, we will pass it over to you, and. We are here to discuss the general budget, or general fund budget. And pass it to you, and then to Quentin. Alright.
Alright, thank you very much, ma'am chair. So this will be just the general fund tonight. I think I have, if I can figure out how to make it work, I have a presentation for you. Please feel free to just ask questions in the middle. Some of it will be pretty. Hard to go back to, so if you see something you want to ask a question about, just go ahead and. Interrupt and ask a question. So let me see if I can get it up and running, so you can see it. Alright, can everybody see that, that that's the general fund? Okay. That's our, our beautiful color logo, which has, I forget how many colors in it, but it's a lot. But very, very pretty. So this is the FY22 budget, which means it covers from July 21 through June of 22. Overall. We set this budget up, the. All of the department heads and myself had a two-day offsite. Actually, the AMB West, Arthur Blank's foundation was kind enough to lend us the use of West Creek Ranch. To do the offsite end, so it was a beautiful offsite, even if it was about the budget. It's an interesting budget this year. There's fewer things to talk about as far as what we cut out of it. I think some of that has to do with. We've kind of improved the way that we forecast what's gonna be available, but there are some. While this year is not very complicated, I think this sets us up for some, some large decisions to make in the next. Next fiscal year, and certainly in the fiscal years after that. So. Let me start with just a general overview. This will follow the outline of the, the word document that you guys have. So if you want to follow along in some of those items, please do, but I redid some of it just to make it a little easier to see on the computer. Alright, so what does the general fund pay for? So general fund is basically general government. It's anything that's not an enterprise fund or anything that we don't charge fees for. To make it profitable on its own. While the general fund does charge some fees, it doesn't charge very many. These. Categories, as I've laid them out here on this slide, is the same order that you'll see them in the budget book itself, in the line items that you have. So it obviously starts with the city commission, which is 0.9%. I added the percentages on here, because I think it's helpful sometimes when you're looking at the whole picture, to understand how much goes to each section. More so than a dollar amount, because the dollar amounts we're using are fairly large. So city court, which is just over 2%. City manager, inside city manager's budget is all of our outside entity support, so that's Wind Rider. The economic development agent, and that's one of the changes this year, is this also includes Jim Woodhull this year. Because he is now transitioning, or hopefully will be if we can hire the other replacement for him, to full-time code rewrite. So while that's not an actual position in our. City structure, we threw him under city manager. So that's myself, Jim, and Faith when it comes to. Salaries and benefits, and then those other things we talked about. Some of the programs we have for city staff that we purchase items for. Or the outside agencies. Then you can see finance there, about 3.4%, plannings at 2.9%, city attorney at 3%. Administrative services, which includes rec, is at 5.8%. Facilities, so this is just general maintenance, things we need for the different buildings, about 3.2%. Central communications, which is phones, some internet, 0.8%. Central stores, which is general office supplies, 1.2%. Sanitarium, I know we don't talk about the sanitarian much, but the city does. Pay for half of the sanitarian's salary. That is the only position in the health department that the city has any input into. So we pay for half the sanitarian, because they do. The health inspections in town for restaurants and things like that. But the rest of the health department is paid for completely on the county to include the health officer. And then. The board obviously doesn't get paid, but if they did, we have a couple members that we would pay for. Law enforcement, which now includes animal control, we moved that out of public works and into law enforcement, so that's gonna fall under LPD. That won't be a sworn officer, but it will be, I think, a little easier as far as. Coordinating with the code enforcement officer through dispatch and with the other officers when they need assistance. So that was more of a. It didn't change the amount of money we spent, it just reallocated it under law enforcement. So law enforcement is the single largest expense out of the. I shouldn't say that. They're the single largest category out of the general fund that we pay for, but that's a little misleading. You can see the fire is next at 18.2%. But that is less than half of what we actually pay for our firefighters, because the other, and I want to say it's somewhere around 55 or 60%. Comes out of the ambulance fund. Because they are both paramedics and firefighters, only half of their base salary shows up here, and benefit shows up here in the general fund. Where a lot of the callback is for ambulance services, so that money gets spent in the ambulance fund, which we'll talk about when we get to enterprise funds. So. If you went, the total cost of all the firefighters, it's actually more than the cost of law enforcement, but because it's split across two funds, it's less than this particular one. Building, so that's things like. Furnaces, roads, that kind of thing, is about 1.8%. Roaming crew, which is parks and cemetery. Sometimes we forget to talk about cemetery, but that's actually a pretty important part of what roaming crew does. Because that's obviously not something that can be put off or delayed, and while people get upset if the parks aren't mowed well, they get really upset if the cemetery is not mowed well. So that's about 9.6%. Of the general fund budget, and then I put dispatch on here. They're not actually paid out of the general fund, but the general fund. Pays directly to the dispatch fund to cover the city's half. So that just represents the 5.9%, almost 6% of the general fund. That goes to the dispatch fund to pay for our communications officers. So what costs in the general fund? You can see the footnote there, about 68% of all general fund expenses are for personnel and benefits. Especially in the general fund, which isn't capital-heavy, almost all of our expenditures go for personnel. The rest of it, the remaining 32% are those things that we talked about, such as central stores, facilities, central comm. Rec supplies, anything else that we need that isn't personnel. But that's the vast, vast majority is personnel. So that's what we do with the general fund. Where does the money for the general fund come from? Again, I broke it down here with percentages, because I thought it's nice to see. Where the money comes from and how much of it comes from each source. So property taxes are the largest single. Revenue source for the general fund, which is the purpose of, of property taxes, but you can see it pays for less than half of all general fund. Or it, it counts for less than half of the general fund revenue. That includes all property taxes, whether that's personal property, real property, trailer taxes, those kind of items. Licenses and permits, so these are things that we charge for, so you can think of animal license, business license, street cut permit, or not street cut permits. Building permits, those kind of things account for about 5.1%. Intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenue is a major source of actual, of revenue for the city. So where does that come from? That's any grants that we receive. State entitlement funds, which are a significant portion of that, which is. Really money that was supposed to be paid to the cities, but there was this weird system where the cities would collect the money, and then they had to pay the state some of the money. And then the state had to pay the city's back part of the money, and I think like 15, 20 years ago, they got together and said there has to be a better way to do it. And what they did is now the state collects all of that money. That is really city money, for things like car licenses and other fees, and then they portion it back to the cities. As the state entitlement funds, which is why when you see. When you see representatives or senators that are saying, well, we should really cut the entitlement share to the cities, because they're getting a lot of money. What they're really saying is, hey, we agreed to, to collect all this money for you, and now we're just gonna keep it, because we don't understand what happened 10 years ago, because we weren't legislators, and. And so that's where you see the push sometimes to cut entitlement funds, even though that's actually city money that's just being collected by the state. But you can see, and the county portion of dispatch is another big section of that, but it, it accounts for over a quarter of our total revenue. You see our charges for services, it does not really. Contribute a huge amount, it's about 1.2%. So that's things like sale of confiscated items, which we do at our auction. Whether that's vehicles or backpacks or bicycles, or whatever happens to be, record and storage fees when we tow things off the street. Grave openings, to which we do charge for all the grave openings. Recreation programs, so if you're paying to, you know, do weekly Wednesdays or something like that, that's, that's a fee, a charge for service that we do. And then programs and swimming pool are some of the biggest. Amounts that come in under this, especially swimming pool. And that comes in about this tiny year. So like right now is when we're selling season passes for the swimming pool. I know we've gotten somewhere in the realm of $20,000 over the last few days. But that's a one-time, big, big revenue now, but it actually has to pay for. The operations that happened last summer, or at least the last half of last summer, because the swimming season usually splits the two fiscal years. Then there's fines and forfeitures, it's 1.4%. You can see that, so not a significant amount of money, I mean, it is a significant amount of money, but not a significant amount of revenue. I will just give you a heads up, I think we were north of 200 tickets for the street sweeper today. So I would be surprised if you didn't get a call on that. But that's where that would go, street sweeper ticket would go right into fines and forfeitures. Then there's the miscellaneous things, building rent, so that's the rent on the new building for the state's portion, they pay in there. Parking rent, so those of you that don't know, the parking lot across from industrial towel, that's not city-owned, but the city leases it, and then we rent out the parking spaces to people downtown. We pretty much just break even on it, but we do bring some revenue in through that. And then we also have recreation donations, so when we do scholarships for. Different kids that have certain needs that can't meet some of the rec programs, people donate to those programs, and then. That goes in as miscellaneous revenue. So other 5.5%, so. A lot of that is a permissive health levy, so that's the additional tax that the city is authorized to charge to pay for specifically employee healthcare. So that's where that comes from, and then transfers in, you can see is actually a significant amount, it's 15.5%. And that is mainly the administrative cost allocation. That is what we charge the ambulance fund, the sewer fund, the water fund, the streets fund, the solid waste fund. For the services that they get from employees in the general fund. Because I know we spend a lot of time, whether that's Courtney in the attorney's office, or Faith up front answering questions, or. Even my time when we get into certain issues. On sewer water and street issues, so. Those aren't free for the street and, and water sections. Excuse me, so they, they pay into the general fund to cover some of those costs. So for significant changes to the general fund this year. You can see there's really only two items. One, we are at least. Have created and have advertised for a dedicated building official. In this case, that is. To replace Jim Woodhull, so he can move full-time to code rewrite. We have, last I check, we have not received one qualified applicant for that job. And we can talk about, a little bit about recruiting and retention later. What that does do is over three to four-year commitment, or three, four-year period, will be committed to fund two positions, the building official. The new building official and Jim's position as the code rewrite. Person working through the entire city code from start to finish. That was something I think we planned on for the last few years, you guys have probably heard that. Before, we started that last year with hiring Matthew into the planning position to take over the planning half. Now we're trying to find someone to take over the building half, which is a little harder. It's kind of a niche hire, people don't have a lot of the building inspection qualifications. But we're working through that right now, and so over the next three to four years, as that building official comes on. Will pay for those two positions, and then when Jim reaches retirement. He will move on to greener pastures, and we will go back down to that regular. Number of, number of city staff. So you can look at it a few ways, you can say we're funded an extra position for a couple of years, or you can just count it as. Contractor costs, if we hired someone outside in the city to do it, so. We felt more comfortable having someone that knew the code, and knew a lot of the original intent behind when the code was created to start that process, so that was the way we went. The other additional. Position this year is an additional patrol officer. After going back through the call volumes, we're still significantly below staffing in the police department. We're starting with one patrol officer this year. We're still below the national average as far as officers per, per capita. Additionally, we are seeing more and more calls through more and more times a day. Right now, there are times during the week where we have one officer on duty. And we're basically. Hoping to count on the sheriff's department to fill in if anything happens, depending on where they are in the county, obviously they cover a lot of area. That's also not always feasible. So this will start to solve that problem, although we most likely will have an officer. Deployed for a lot of year, or a lot of the year on a guard duty, so even adding the additional officer will be kind of back where we started. At least for the year. You can see this really comes to play when we look at the overtime budget for the police department. That's also increasing, and that's because we're requiring more and more hours without the actual. Positions to fill. So that was the other thing that was added to this year's budget. So while we talk about the general, and what we spend out of it, and where the money comes from, it's also important to know, because this will play into our conversation later. What restrictions has the state put on the growth of the revenue for the general fund? And I know I talk about it all the time, but I like to say it over and over, because it's complicated. The actual mill levy itself, so the property taxes that the city is able to bring in, is not tied directly to the increase in property value, or even taxable value. Of the properties, because the state has limited it to one-half the average rate of inflation over the last three years, and that has been averaging between half a percent and 1%. That is not the rate at which costs are increasing. Costs, costs are increasing, obviously at least twice that much, because it's the average rate of inflation, so. If you're, if you're restricted to half inflation, the rate of inflation is gonna be twice that much, but because it's not regional. We see even a larger increase in some costs locally, and revenue just continues to fall behind. So while we bring in more money, possibly. It isn't keeping up with. The expected costs that we have to, have to maintain. The lack of a sales tax is another problem we have, even though as a tourist economy, we see a lot of out-of-state money come in. It does not come to the city or the county as a local government. The sales taxes that are out there, and there are some. If you look at like the, the bed tax, or the rental car tax, alcohol and cigarettes also have, tobacco have some taxes on them. All those go to the state. Local governments don't see any of that money, except for a little bit that comes back from the tourism department to the CBBs. That is a little bit of the bed tax that comes back to us. The only thing we've done locally with that is the Tourism Business Improvement District, which the hoteliers do, have basically started on their own. That bed tax that they've added to their properties does come back to Livingston, but it comes back to the Tourism Business Improvement District, and they determine what to do with it, and most of that. Pretty much all of that is spent on putting beds and heads, basically, bringing people in to stay in the hotels, because that's the, that's the point of the money. And then we fall into the prohibition on larger cities having resort tax. Even though we're smaller than Whitefish, and Whitefish has a resort tax. Because they got in before they were 5,000, and no one thought about what would happen if you grew over 5,000, they still have it. Where any other city over 5,000 right now cannot apply for the resort tax in the state. It is statutorily limited to 5,000 and below as far as population goes. So what does that mean? Well, big picture, over the last five years, so 2017, FY17 to FY22. Property values in the city have increased 44%. So that's significant, that's a 44% increase. At the same time, the tax revenue has increased 26%. Now you're like, hey, 26% is more than half of 44%. I know you're thinking that, and it is, and that's because one of the exceptions to that growth rate is new properties. And so the new properties we brought into the city pay 100% the first year, and then, so we get all of the, the increased revenue the first year. And then they can only grow at half, the first, half the rate of inflation after that. So I don't think purposely or intentionally. The legislature has really created a fiscal system where you grow or die. If you don't have new properties coming in, your tax base does not grow fast enough to keep up. With your increased costs as you grow, and that can be seen in our own expenditures, where we're up 31%. Over that same five-year period, where our revenue is only up 26%. So basically, we have 5%. Less, and more than that, but 5% less purchasing power than we did in FY17. Because expenditures are, are increasing faster than revenues, so. That will only. It'll only get worse over time. It doesn't really get better unless you grow quickly. And so really, there's some scales of economies that happen when cities get larger, they grow faster, they bring in more taxes. And. You can, you can pass more mill levies in larger cities, because you can bring in significant amount of money. That don't necessarily impact the individual taxpayer as much as they would in a city the size of Livingston. So we're kind of in that weird spot where. We're growing and we need more services. But our revenue is not growing at the rate to pay for those services. And we'll get into that as we go. I think I have some more slides of that later.
This is. Can I just add some quick, I guess, clarification or additional information on the tax revenue? Talks about being able to increase our ad valorem tax by the average rate of inflation. Just to give you an example of what that truly looks like. Last year, in the base that existed, we we taxed 2.489 million dollars. That same pool this year, we're only eligible to increase that to 2.512 million. So I think that gives you a good idea. Our three year average rate of inflation this year was 0.93%. Where that is not keeping up with the increase in expenditures on an annual basis. And again, the the only increase that we get in that tax revenue besides that inflationary rate is on new properties that come into the city or new new building.
Alright, so what does that mean overall? So the general fund health is good. Our goals that we've set out or specifically that you've set out as the commission is by guidance 16.67 operational reserves. So that's two months of expenses that we have. And then in the strategic plan, we increased that to 33.33% of operational reserve or six months of operational expenses. Which will pretty much get you to the first tax payment. Which is why that was the, that was the reason we went with six months because really, when you start out in the general fund on July 1st, it has no money. Because you haven't brought in any taxes and the taxes you did bring in paid for the last fiscal year. And so when you spend, you are either spending out of the reserves or you're spending out of other funds. And for probably a long time, the city was relying on the water fund to float the general fund to the first tax payment. And that that just means that we used while we didn't use water fund funds, they had the cash in the bank account and that cash was used to make payroll, making purchases through the first six months of the year. With an operational reserve at 33%, the general fund can at least pay for itself up to the first tax payment. And that puts less of a burden or less of a strain on the other enterprise funds to float that cash to keep the general fund solvent until it gets its income, which is tax revenue. And of course, last year was even longer than normal for the tax revenue to come in due to some delays. But that's a whole nother issue that Paige has to work on during the years, the cash flow and making sure that we aren't overspending our cash balances, even if we stay within our budget, which is a weird dynamic, but that's the way it works. So our projections for FY22, we're looking at having an ending balance in FY22. So June of 22 of just under $2 million, 1.988, which will be a 33.89 operational reserve. So that puts us pretty much exactly on target for where we want to be in the operational reserve. And that puts us in a good position as we move into the next the next fiscal year. So it sounds like a good news story, and it is until this point. We have really done a lot with the budget we have. We've accomplished a ton of the goals set forth in the strategic plan and we're continuing to accomplish things. But sometimes I feel like our budget is a little like this. We we are full steam ahead. Everything is is working at top capacity, but we're running out of track. We will probably be in a position where we'll have to make some significant decisions if we're going to be able to keep things on track and headed in the right direction. So what does that look like?
Basically question real quick before we get Paige mentioned Paige, you mentioned something earlier about I can't remember what the name of the fund was, but you said that it could only increase really with like new building.
It's just the way that the tax revenues increase. So when we look at at the pool of properties that we taxed last year, we can only increase what those individuals taxes are by the the rate of inflation, right? The average rate of inflation for the past three years or or half of that. And then as new properties come on, so annexations or new buildings, so newly taxable property is the only way that number goes above the average, that half a percent of the average rate of inflation, if that makes sense.
It does. That's what I was wondering. You just said annexations too. So I was just making sure I was following. Thank you for that.
So what does it look like as we kind of look into the future and try and figure out where we're headed? As we go, the the demands on the general fund are only increasing as we go. You would think we thought we were going to get a break for some development during the COVID pandemic. We did not development increase during the COVID pandemic. If you don't believe that, look at the cost of construction materials right now. We thought, okay, maybe that was just a COVID year anomaly and the developmental stagnate a little bit going into FY22. So far, this this building season shows absolutely no signs of that. If anything, it might accelerate even some more. I thought maybe the increase in construction materials would would stop development, but it has not. The the prices that we're seeing in Livingston and surrounding areas, even places like Big Timber, Three Forks, those prices are only going up and they're going up significantly. And nobody's having any trouble moving the properties. So I do not anticipate any slowdown in construction during FY22. As an example, I asked Jim the other day, how many developable lots do we have in the city? And the answer is somewhere in the range of 40 to 45 total lots that are developable in the city. Now there's some other areas that could be developed, obviously Watson's Ranch and those areas, but as far as platted lots in the city, what we would basically consider infill. There was only 40 to 45 available lots that you could build on. So it's, we're running out of space, which you'll see some development pressure on areas you wouldn't have thought before.
Yeah, are you including? What are you including in developable, developable and developable lots?
So pretty much
I mean that there's a couple chunks of land that you might not be including.
Right. So I'm not including the big chunks of land like Watson's Ranch or R K or even the North Town areas that haven't been planted. So basically areas that already have been planted and have been subdivided. So it'd be empty lots like in the center of town. Anything that's left in Discovery Vista that hasn't been built on, anything that's left in Ridge U Trails that hasn't been built on, or the the North Town areas that have been planted, but haven't, construction hasn't started on those lots. So actual lots that are are ready without any subdivision process to build on.
Thank you.
And I do expect some of those other areas to get subdivision proposals or other development proposals. I would not be surprised at all. In fact, I would be surprised if we didn't. What's it mean as far as recruitment? It means recruitment has gotten extremely difficult. And that's where hirings have stagnated. I think Shannon, if you're on, are we up to two seasonals? Do we still only have one?
We only have one.
Yeah. So we're, we're at one seasonal right now out of, I think, seven that we usually hire. We, we're happy to have one because we had two others that applied. We, we hired them and then before they started, they're like, sorry, we got them jobs. And it didn't come to the city. So it is is getting difficult to attract to attract talent. It's not just the seasonal level employees that are difficult to recruit. Like I said, the building director, I still don't think we've received a qualified candidate for that position. So we're gonna have to get creative in how we recruit those positions. For a long time, or at least for several years, we've been able to rely on the excess capacity of the staff that we already had, whether that was in streets, water, within the police force, within the administrative staff. And we just, we are out of excess capacity. We we've used it all in all the items we're doing. I think a great example of that is bringing Matthew Menard on as the director of planning has allowed us to do a lot of stuff in planning because we have an additional body to actually do those things to spend time on the items that we wanted to get done. Without his hire, we probably would not be nearly as far along in a lot of those areas because we just didn't have the staff to accomplish it. I can tell you that they've been here, what, three, three years, two years, two and a half years? We've had Faith on board. I don't know what I would do if she wasn't there right now. Before we hired her, I answered the main line that came into the city. So if people called about anything, it came to my office. Having her has freed me up to do a bunch of more strategic thinking on items. The amount of time she spends on public outreach, whether that's Facebook, social media, the email list, working on the website. Those are things that we all have been able to do over the past few years. If you haven't checked out the new website yet, please do. It's amazing. And it's getting better every day that she works on it. You know, those are things that just wouldn't be getting done. And we're, we're hitting that wall in the other departments. And while all that is going on, our population is not asking for less. They're asking for more things. And that's, that's what they want. And that's fine. But we just have to figure out how to provide them. You know, the population itself is increasing. So just by that nature, you're going to have more demands. But I think there's a higher level of service that's expected than was expected five years ago, and certainly 10 years ago, and absolutely 15 years ago. I think we're transitioning from more of that really small town where people were okay if there were some potholes, if they didn't have to pay any more street tax. I think those days are I think those days are gone. I think people expect things to be at a certain level, and we probably are not staffed to meet that level of service that is becoming the expectation if it's not already the expectation. Just the the feedback that we get on things we do. You know, the amount of information we try and put out, there's always requests for more information. And I'm pretty sure we put out a lot more information than the city has in the past. We try many different ways to reach people. You know, there is desire for more parks and more trails and more paved streets and more information, a bigger social media presence, better communications. And the list goes on of what people expect from the city. And it's things that you would expect from a professional city. But we aren't currently staffed to reach those levels of service. And staffing is difficult because the general fund doesn't have a way to really increase revenues. We'll talk about some of the options that are available to us. So those, those are some of the issues that we're having to deal with as we move forward. So what can we do about it? Well, there's a few things we have to do immediately. We probably need to have a moratorium on new parts and trails that doesn't include the dog park that we've been talking about up on high ground. But I think that has to be the last new facility that we do for a while until we have the staff to maintain it. With one seasonal, just mowing is going to be a challenge. There's no time to do things like check Pompeii's playground and make sure that that's up to speed. Work on the the splash park, which is a constant source of maintenance need. Resurface trails, whether that's gravel, whether that's paved. There's a lot of maintenance needs that come. And we probably are already short personnel to maintain the parks and trails that we have. And so adding them, I just don't see any way that we would be able to service them and keep them at the level that people would expect and rightly so expect. You will probably see an increase in the number and types of user fees. There's a lot of things the city doesn't charge for right now that we are going to have to charge for to pay for some of the personnel that we have. You'll first see that. What was our first new hire? It was a planning department. So you will soon see new fees in the planning department for zoning reviews for you know, an increase in the fees for a subdivision applications for a site plan review. All of those items are going to come with a cost because to to fund the staff that's required to do those things, which we have to do more of and to a greater level than we have in the past, we have to have another source of revenue to help offset those costs. So you'll see that. Without a new source of income, at some point, you're going to see reduced city services. Go ahead, Commissioner News.
Um, so you mentioned these fees. It's, I'm just wondering, like, so our impact fees were sort of painfully low before the adjustment. Do our, the fees that you just mentioned mirror that trend that they're underpriced compared to other communities in Montana?
So the ones that we have are underpriced compared to other communities. I mean, it depends on the community, right? Obviously, there's a big difference if you compare it to Bozeman or or you know, Lewistown. But they are under and they're underpriced for for the the state. And more importantly, there's a lot of them we just don't have. There's a whole set of fees that we aren't charging that a lot of the cities are. The fact that we didn't charge any developer for a site plan review, that means the time that the planning department, the building department, the the police department, the fire department, the public works department, all spent reviewing that was at no cost to the developer. And so those are the kind of fees that are going to have to be added to make up some of that make up some of that time. And they're fair fees. They're paying for services they're getting. It's not like we're, we're making up new fees for for a service they don't get. It's a service that they have been getting to this point for free, which we just can't really afford to give away for free anymore.
Thank you.
You'll probably see a need for more special districts. If you look at really any of the cities, Billings, Butte, Great Falls, if you want a different kind of example, but Bozeman have many more special districts than Livingston has. And that's because all of them face the same restrictions on the general fund. And so if you really want a great parts and trail system, you're going to need some kind of parts and trails, special district that has its own source of income. It's just not something that can be floated out of the general fund long term because there's no growth potential in the general fund. Same thing could be said for tree district. You know, any, any item like that where we want a dedicated source of funding, something at a higher level than you're going to get out of the general fund. Now, all of those have to be voter approved, so they would all be valid initiatives. I would have to go in front of the voters. But to to really maintain parks, trails, trees at that level, we're going to need a source of income. And that's really the only option for us.
The state legislature hasn't taken that that tool away from us yet?
I didn't even see a proposal on that one. So
just, there's been so many. I'm expecting to hear that.
Without, so some of these are if then items, right? So if we don't find additional funding for more personnel, you're going to see an increase in wait time for city services. And that's simply because we have more people, but not more staff. So even things you wouldn't have had to wait for in the past, as you get more people, that's more demand on the staff. And unless we have more staff, it's going to take more time for each person to get the answers they're looking for. Whether that's a freedom of information request or a building permit or a you know, a dog license, whatever it is, there's at some point, we're going to start seeing longer waits for city services. And I'll tell you right now, as far as city services go, there are the wait times in Livingston are exceptionally low. If you don't believe that, try and put a subdivision application in in Bozeman and see if you get to it this year or not. Where we're turning things in a month or a couple of weeks. So you're going to see those increases of wait times if we don't have the staff to make up for it. And then we're just going to have a limited ability to execute new projects, right? I think a great example of that is the growth policy. That has been a great initiative, and I think it's been a wonderful you know, wonderful process with the community and the planning board has done a ton of work on that. But that took an incredible amount of time from a lot of city resources, mainly Matthew, obviously spending a ton of time on that. But if he is if it was a similar project and we have the probably the number of subdivision applications that we're going to have this year, there's just not that time to be able to do both of them. So it's going to, it's going to impact how we look at at new projects. It impacts the ability of the staff to bring proposals to the commission, to look at proposals from the commission. It really even, it limits our ability to interact with the public because if you're just spending every day pedaling as hard as you can to get things done, you don't have that time to sit back and have the conversations you need to have. So someone once told me, actually, a lot of people have told me over the years, don't, don't bring a problem unless you have a solution. Now, I know this isn't a true solution, but it gives you an idea, I think, of the scope of the problem. What would it take right now to be at the level of service that I think people expect? And that, this chart tells you what I think and the staff, we sat down, this is one of the things we came up with on our offsite, is what do we need right now to reach the level of service that people deserve? One is deputy planner and which that should probably tell you how how much development has been increased over the last couple of years. We just hired someone to do planning full time. Until then, it was split. One position was split between building and planning, even One position was split between building and planning. Even with that. We probably need a deputy planner position to help work through the applications. It's gonna be a lot of stuff to do. Uh, Matthew spends a lot of time with the planning board doing especially growth policy. And while I'm gonna be super excited to have a growth policy passed. That's probably the easy part for the staff. Implementation is gonna take much, much more staff resources than development. And I think. And Commissioner News, you can correct me if I'm wrong in this, but I think we're somewhere between 150 and 200 strategies in the growth policy right now. That sound about right?
I mean, I haven't counted them, but it's a lot.
So that's 150 to 200 strategies for the staff to try and figure out how to implement. That's not really something you give one person and say, hey, figure this out. So even, even two would be great. An additional code enforcement officer. I, I might have mentioned that we, we passed out approximately 250. Street sweeper tickets today. That is the code enforcement officer all day. He didn't do any parking enforcement. He didn't look at any. You know, any, uh, trailers parked in the wrong place. He's not looking at any signs. He's not looking at any. Any decrepit properties. Uh, there's a whole list of things he wasn't doing today because all he was doing was street sweeper tickets. There is probably, there's certainly enough work for two, uh, code enforcement officers. There might be more.
That's like the average number of tickets that, uh, if there were two in code. If there were two code enforcement officers, that's how many tickets would be going out every day?
I don't know if necessarily that many. It's, street sweeper is always a high day. But it just, like today, his entire day was taken up with street sweeper. So we didn't get anything else done in code enforcement. There are days, his entire day is taken up with just one property as we try and figure out how to work through. The process to get a property cleaned up and there. I've, I've got a list of citizen complaints that's fairly long of properties they would like looked at. And that not only is a code enforcement officer, that is also a. A city attorney issue at the time takes a lot. There's just. And that's, that's still not looking at trailers. That's not looking at signs. I know there's a lot of signs that need looked at and, and talked with the owners. There's just that much work to do. You know, one nice thing about code enforcement and deputy planner to some extent is there is some revenue associated with those positions. If we have a code enforcement officers, when they do write tickets, that's revenue that comes in to help pay for their position. We have a deputy planner when he's doing site plan reviews or taking in applications for subdivisions. That's revenue that comes in to help pay for that position. So there's some abilities there. Uh, facility maintenance, I have this down as a position. There's a few ways you could go about this. This has probably been a hole in the city for a long time. While we have a maintenance position in the city county building. And we fund a portion of that in accordance with the rest of the, the formula for the building. We really have nobody doing facility maintenance. In the rest of the city. We have nobody that's specifically ready to take care of problems in the civic center, the public works building. Uh, cemetery buildings, Star Road facility, uh, any of the other city properties around. We have no one. Whose responsibility it is to make sure things are okay. And that leads to problems occasionally. Uh, I know we were probably spending more money replacing items than we would have in preventive maintenance. It's just that we didn't have anybody to do the preventive maintenance. Sure, Lisa down in the civic center can try and be the expert on the. Heating systems and plumbing and, and the electrical, but really she should be doing HR and helping run rec programs. Not trying to do facilities maintenance. So that's a, a great example is the Star Road facility. We are stuck with the repair bill on that one because the water pipes froze. Well, the toilets froze and flooded a portion of the building. Why was the water on in the winter? Well, because we don't have anybody that goes around and looks for that. We don't have a facility maintenance person that is in charge of winterizing things. And so things like that fall through the cracks when it's not really anybody's job. People are just filling in as, as well as they can. Alongside their other jobs. I don't know if this is a, is a full-time city position. This might be contracts with several businesses in town, whether we have. A plumber and an electrician and a general handyman on the line with a retainer that have to. You know, have some kind of contract with us, but it's still gonna cost around the same per year. But that is a, a lack in the city that we have right now. Public engagement coordinator. A lot of times people call this the public information officer, but what we're missing in the city is not really the classic public information officer. We don't need someone to go out and give TV interviews and do press releases. What we really need is someone that is full-time concentrating on engaging with the public. So what does that mean? That means this would be a position that ran all our social media accounts and the website and our email lists. The amount of time that, that Faith spends on this is. Is amazing. It's a lot. I bet you it's 60% of her day is spent on just public engagement. And it's not really in her job description. That's just something she's done because she knows it needs to get done and so she stepped up and done it. But that means there's no coordinated overall outreach program. It's catching, catch as catch can. It's whatever I think of during the day, whatever she thinks of during the day. Shannon does a great job in public works, getting things out in the public works Facebook page. But, but he's concentrated on the public works Facebook page that, you know, when does that go over to an email blast from the city? Uh, Maggie does the same thing in rec. She's doing all the Instagram accounts and, and Facebook, but there's no overarching. Person that's saying, what is the public looking for? What information do they need? How do we get it to? And I think that's only gonna become more important as the city becomes, um, larger. And it's harder to get. Information from one specific point. We've gotten a long ways with the website and I think that has solved a lot of the problems, at least in the short term. By having the information out there, but you still have to be able to. To have to be able to navigate the website. You still have to know that that's information that exists before you go out and look for it. Street sweeper is a great example. We've done everything we can. To get the information for the street sweeper schedule out. We, it's in the spring flyer. It was on Facebook. We pushed it on the website. You know, when, so the spring flyer goes to every utility customer in the city. There are still people that don't know the street sweeper is coming through. And I don't know what else we could do because I don't have the time to sit down and think about that problem specifically. But a public engagement coordinator could and they could figure out ways to engage with the community in different methods and different. Modes, uh, and really, really work at getting information out, which I think is one of the main desires of the community. At least one I hear a lot. Hopefully you do too, um, that people would like more information on what the city is doing. A building fire inspector. So right now. We have a building inspector. Uh, we have a building official, which is Jim. The building inspector. Is under Jim, is Brad and the fire inspections are done by the on-call fire crews. So our firefighters are going around doing fire inspections during the day unless they get called away and they can, or they need training. Or they have other meetings that they have to attend to. So it's, it's catch as catch can. The fire inspection is also, we call it a safety inspection. It's also directly related to the business license. So. The revenue generating portion of business, business license is lacking because we don't have anybody. That is responsible to ensure that all the businesses that got a license last year get a license this year. Uh, because it really isn't anybody's job. It's just something that's always happened on the side. You know, finance does what they can to catch some, fire does what they can to catch some, but I know. Paige, when you printed the report last time, how many? Licenses didn't we have this year? People got them last year?
I, I don't remember, but I know we are missing about $53,000 in revenue.
Right. So somewhere in the range of $50,000 in revenue loss because we don't have anybody who enforced that specific. Item. Uh, we don't have anybody to dedicate their time to that. Uh, another building fire inspector could do that. That's a niche. Hire, it'd be difficult. Park maintenance is probably a big one. The seasonal model, I'm not sure it's ever gonna work again, or at least it's gonna be a while before it works. I think starting right now. Starting right now, McDonald's is somewhere around 14 an hour. 14 an hour, 15 an hour. Lisa, if you're on, what are we paying seasonals right now?
We're paying them 14 to start in their first season and McDonald's is anywhere from 15 to 17.
Alright, so, so you can work at McDonald's for 15 to 17. In air conditioning, or you can be part of our seasonal crews mowing lawns and cutting bushes for 14. It's, it's not a workable model right now. It just, we're just not gonna get people. I think that's proven because we haven't gotten people. You know, and that's, that's what we've done for a long time. That's always been the model, but there are plenty of jobs out right, there right now for that. Demographic to get and we are not competitive. Um, I think Marx pays even more than that because of how fast those guys are working there. I think they started like 17. It's. The city is not competitive when it comes to seasonals, especially because where the city becomes competitive is in the benefits package. Um, that's where we can compete with construction companies or somebody else. That pay a higher wage. We have health insurance stipend and you can get PERS and, um, you know, there's other benefits that you can get. By being a city employee, but you don't get those as a season. Uh, so, um, if you do, you get a very minor portion of them. It's, it's difficult. And this is just general fund, to make it, make it happier. This is just general fund. If we start talking about streets and waters, which we will in the enterprise funds. This problem exists there as well. So I'll say this at, at risk of the pitchforks and torches. One, one thing that we do that we probably shouldn't, but people love, so we do it, is spring cleanup. We do not have the manpower to do spring cleanup. That's a week's worth of time. So this year without seasonals. Road crews, sewer crews, water crews are gonna be out doing spring cleanup. Because we don't have the seasonals to do it, which means we get a week or more behind in water and sewer and streets. Because we're pulling those guys out of their jobs that they need to be doing and doing spring cleanup, which is a zero revenue. Project for the city. Right? Uh, it's a great project. Everybody loves spring cleanup. It keeps the city looking great and it's a wonderful thing to do. But that's something that we used to do with excess capacity that we just don't have. You know, and I would, I think it's a great thing and I wanna, I would love to continue to do it, which is why we are doing it. But there's a significant price we pay for doing it and that's getting behind in all those other areas because we don't have the staff to keep up. And then we have the social worker down there and that cost at 86,800, that's for a person. That's not a program. And one person I don't think meets the intent of what the community is looking for right now. And I, I know they are really looking through this right now and there's some community groups that are, are, and Lisa's engaged with them. That are really trying to determine what they want, um, what works best for Livingston and how would that work? So. My point on that one is the 86,000 is, is not enough for that program. That's just the personnel cost, um, for one person. So depending on the model, it could be significantly higher than that. So what are you looking at? You're looking at $713,000 and change annually more. In personnel costs. Which. Excuse me, while I pull this up. Wish, when you're looking at this year. Budget that I propose to you is already running $144,000 deficit. So we're spending $144,000 more this year than we're expected to get into revenue and we need another $700,000. To meet these needs. And I'm not saying these are all the needs, but these were the most important needs that when we sat down as a staff, we said, these are the things that, that need to be done. There's more out there. City, city attorney is a great example. Courtney is doing prosecutions. She's doing. All the ordinances and resolutions that come before you. She's doing all the questions and annexations and. All of that with her and a legal assistant. Courtney, what's the staffing in the, the county attorney's office? Did I lose her? Oh, she might have stepped away. I think it's seven. I, I think that's the last time I looked. It was seven. Now, to be fair, they do federal prosecution, so they're gonna require a couple more people, but, but seven to one is not the ratio that. It needs to be. How many in the county attorney's office?
Six.
Six, six, not seven, sorry. And that one's not, that one didn't even make the list. If, if you wanna look at things. So what's it all mean? What's it all for? Our operational reserve is healthy. That's good news. Uh, it's, we've never, well, as far as, as long as I've been here, we've never been at 33%. I think Jim will tell you that at one point, the city of Livingston was at a 50% reserve and had to be worried about being penalized by the state. But this is a, a super healthy reserve, which is great. We're right, right at our goal, right where we wanted to be. We have met a ton of the strategic goals. We are getting a lot done. I think you see that across the board, whether it's the growth policy or, uh, another dog park, whether it's the sewer improvements at Fifth Street. The solar projects that are going on. There are a lot of strategies and goals that we are meeting and so that's good news. On the bad news size, we're running about $145,000 deficit. Now. The reserve can meet that. People often wonder, well, what do you care? You know, I mean, we're not going into debt. It was just a deficit. Well, it's true. Um, and we're still fine as far as the operational reserve goes. It just tells you, you can't do that for a prolonged period of time. It just means that sooner or later, that's gonna catch up with you. There are some extenuating circumstances this year that I think make it not as bad as that, um, as that number. Uh, but those are decisions that we'll have to make as we move forward. Some of that being that we know we're funding an extra position right now as far as Jim goes for the code rewrite. So we know that that, that amount is in there. I think we can use some of the ARP money, the American Rescue Plan money to backfill lost revenue in rec from FY21. Which was significant. Um, off the top of my head, I would say it's somewhere around $50,000. So if we wanted, if we decide to use. The American Rescue Plan money to backfill. The, the revenue that was lost in the recreation department. We would be, um, somewhere and so that would take 50,000 out. That would take you down to 90. So we're getting into, I think, realms that make this feasible. Uh, we are at the point where service requirements are outstripping the available staff. Whether that's. You know, whether that's mowing, whether that's, uh, getting back to people with answers, whether that's meeting, meetings for developers. All that's going a long ways. You know, uh, Shannon probably, I don't know how many projects he has going this summer. Uh, cause I can't count that high, but there's a lot of them. Uh, we're doing the Ash, the Emerald Ashmore projects. We're doing. You know, we're working on the lagoon projects. We're working on the Fifth Street sewer crossing. We have other street projects that need to be done. Um, you know, we're looking at the rest of the downtown CIP. All of those. Requirements are still there and they're not going anywhere. So basically. We have three broad options moving forward. What we do inside of any of these options, I mean, there's still a lot to, to determine. But I wanted to bring it up this fiscal year, so we are thinking about it through FY22. So when we get to FY23. We've thought about it and we have a plan. The austerity model, as you might wanna call it, whether you were greased or, or whatever, is we just reduce services to match revenue. It's a valid model. We could absolutely do that. But I don't think that's probably what the community is looking for. That means. Less snow removal, not more. That means less park maintenance, not more. That means less communications, not more. That means the website's not updated as much. Just anything, we just basically make do with what we have and what you get is what you get. The other model is to encourage or subsidize growth to increase, increase revenue to meet service levels. We are in that. You know, that. Uh, you know, uh, some people would call it the, the doldrums or the, the area for populations of a city. Where we're starting to have the requirements of a bigger city, but we don't have the revenue of a bigger city. And so. You either need to stay a smaller city and not do as much. Or you need to grow enough to have the revenue to do it. Cause at some point you get those. Excess staff again. So if we bought, if we hire two, then we have some capacity there again. And so it's not a. It's not a direct, every time the city grows, you need more staff. We just need to get to a level where we have the staff to meet the basic needs now and in the future. So if you look at, at someplace like Bozeman or. Maybe Cal Spell's a good example. It's not quite as big. They're gonna have a significantly more staff than us, but even though they're twice as big. They don't have twice as many staff. Because you do get some returns on those investments as you go up. So. We can try to grow enough to get to the next level of service and the next level of income to be able to do that. And then. The third path is actually one that could be taken. With either of the other two or on its own and that's basically to pass some combination of mill levies to fund services with the current tax base. So that means, um, if that's a special district, it's a special district and that funds parks or you have a special. So that means, um, if that's a special district, it's a special district and that funds parks, or you have a special district to fund trees. Um, you could, yeah, I don't know if, I'll say this, I guess it's technically a possibility. I don't know if I've ever seen it anywhere. You could do a general government mill levy, right, where you just increase the tax levy for. The general fund and general staff, and that would help pay for things like more, um, more personnel in the city attorney's office or. Any other general function, more people in finance office, more people, basically those jobs that we looked at. Um, that fall outside of a special district, you could do that. Um, I, I really don't think there's been one in Montana that's been successful. I don't even know if there's been one tried. Like, I can't imagine, but that is an option and it does exist. So there, that, that is the, the budget in a nutshell, along with some of the strategic looking uh, forward. Um, I will take any questions on this and then we can move on to the line, line items or the overview of, of the general fund itself. But please, if you have anything. You would like to ask. That would be the time.
Hi, Mike. Hey, Mike.
Hey, Mel.
Um, this is just a small thing, but moving out of the city county building to your own building, uh, that, that's a benefit.
Yeah, yeah, actually, it's going to be, it's going to be a significant benefit. There's a couple of things that come with that that are, are really helpful. Um, one, we talked about the areas that need to grow. None of those areas had physical space to grow. So like adding an officer to the police department, there was nowhere for that person to go. Adding a building official, there was no space for that building official to sit in. Um, having, having the new building, one opens up the spaces in both the city county building and in public works. And there's additional spaces in the new building where we can add the staff that we need as we go through, even if that's just an intern. Um, like Courtney had a, a legal intern for uh, part of the year this year, which was really helpful to her, I think. But we didn't have anywhere for him to sit. He was standing in the corner at a stand-up desk because that's all we had. Um, so it's going to make us more efficient that way. Additionally, having the state in the same area, I think is going to, could be some benefits. Instead of us paying rent for the finance department, we are now receiving rent. Um, and I think all told, that's about a sixty thousand dollar flip. Um, where we're saving twenty-some thousand dollars and getting twenty-some thousand dollars or some combination thereof. Um, but that's about fifty thousand dollars. It frees up per um, per general fund fiscal year. So that's, that's a large benefit, and I think just the benefit of people coming in and being able to. Talk to the building official and then walk to finance and pay for their building permit is going to, uh, one, make it easier for. Customers as they come in or citizens as they try to do things, but it's certainly going to make it easier for us. Not losing people in between the application and the payment process. Um, so there's, there's, there's a lot of advantages to it. And I think you'll see that as we, as we move forward.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I have something as well. Sorry, I will be moving back to the high school in a few minutes. Um, so I'm sort of joining in when I can. I. Question on solutions. So I appreciate that we're looking at solutions. But I.
I can't hear Darrell. Am I the only one?
She somehow muted herself.
Oh, sure. Okay, I'm back here. Sorry, I am truly moving around. So I'm wondering what other solutions we have contemplated and or discussed. Um, I feel like this is a, maybe like one solution. Or this is potentially one of the solutions, but are there others that you've, you've discussed? Because off the top of my head, I have some ideas, but I don't know if they're um, possible.
So I think the, the combination of things on that last slide are, are really what we looked at. Um, increasing the tax base, uh, creating special districts, um, or just reducing services to meet the current. Um, revenue stream or the three main ways you can do it. Uh, there's a lot of strategies inside of that, but if there's something specific. Um, you'd like to talk about, we can certainly tell you if we've mentioned it or had conversations.
Well, thank you. Um, one that comes to mind is that when we. You know, with a moratorium, you knew I would ask about parks and trails, of course. Um, but with considering a moratorium, my concern with that is that. It's a short-term fix, so you know, even if it's three to five years fix for a potentially long-term problem. So if it's a moratorium and we don't, with no new parks and trails, does that then impact like dedicated parkland? Um, cash in lieu of then in, in replacing the dedicated parkland, for example. Um, and, and then you were saying uh, staffing of positions like that, including others, not just parks and trails. But other positions as well, or it's hard to staff, so uh, is that a forever problem? Um, are, are there solutions that you've considered such as, uh, or not solutions, let me restate that. Are there like long-term planning, um, and problems that come if we don't long-term plan such as. Uh, you know, give up on dedicated parklands for future, in future development areas or in developing areas. Because we don't have staffing that then, you know, ten downs, ten years down the road, we have no dedicated parkland. Or opportunities for parks to exist in certain neighborhoods. So do you see like, I'm thinking down the road for the future. Um, times versus the current time, which is because in a nutshell, you're saying we can't staff. The maintenance, parks maintenance staff, and that's our biggest hurdle. So do you see what I'm saying, Michael? And just like thinking, I, I mean, that's the immediate problem, but then the long-term fallout. To the immediate problem can be just as bad.
Sure, and there's, there's several ways to go about looking at this and determining how we want to go forward. Um, dedicated parkland is absolutely one of the things that you would need to look at and decide how we wanted to do it. Uh, we could go more of the route we did, uh, the last Discovery Vista phase where they created a park and they dedicated it to the public. But it's maintained by the HOA. So it's a publicly available park, but not paid or maintained by the city. So that's one way to do dedicated parkland. Uh, we could do cash in lieu of, and then use the cash in lieu of to maintain the parks that we already have. Um, that would work, I think, for a while. I'm not sure exactly how long that time period is. Um, right now, we are, um, one of the benefits we have is we have more park acreage per person than I think any other city in Montana. Um, so we have more parks uh, per capita than Bozeman, per more acreages of park than Bozeman and Billings and Butte. Uh, Great Falls, um, which is great. And, but that gives us a cushion to figure out how to go forward. Um, I think long-term for parks and trails, really, if you want to uh, be able to continue on the, on the glide path that we've been on. Um, and providing amenities to the community, that's going to take a dedicated um, source of revenue. So that's probably one of the places that we would look at a special district and see how that came out. So I think short, I think you're right. I think a moratorium is a short-term solution. It's a short term, term solution to come up with and implement. What we want our long-term uh, solution can, to be, whether that's um, fewer dedicated parklands. And more HOA-run parklands, if that's fewer dedicated parklands and using cash in lieu of to help maintain what we have. Or if that's uh, a dedicated um, maintenance district or recreation district or park district. Um, all of those things are tools that we can use to get to the solution we want, but we just have to decide how we want to go forward with it.
Okay, thank you, Michael. So we are thinking down.
We're sure, sure trying to think strategically anyway, but it's going to be, some of it will be options that we present to the commission or the Parks and Trails Committee. And we're going to have to, to decide between those options, how we want to move forward. And hopefully that's what FY twenty-two is for, is to kind of figure out where we're headed so that we're ready to pull the trigger on that FY twenty-three.
Yeah, if I could add to that, you know, that's, um, I know we've talked in the past, um, the past about creating a park district that. Would uh, collect the revenue separately and stuff like that. We may be a little small for that, but. Um, people really want, want the parks and trails and be maintained, um, you know. Floating a levy, um, to maintain them. Um, it's kind of like put your money where the mouth is, you know, it just, you know, we want them, we got to pay for them. And uh, and I'm all for that. Um. Um, to maintain that and keep going forward with that. Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead.
Can I have the floor? Thank you. Um, so. I agree with both of you. Um, I think. The idea of a moratorium on parks and trails would require a lot more conversation, and I think. You know, I don't have the growth policy memorized, the draft, it's large, and I'm sure there are many strategies as previously stated around this topic. So, um, given the amount of work that went into that, I think that there will probably be ideas that emerge. In terms of how to handle parks and trails in the future. Um. I think that that'll offer us some insight on what the community wants. Um, I do have some questions. Uh, Michael, so. I mean, I'm going to have a lot of questions, but my first is really about. I'm thinking about the staff, the list of staff that you propose here. So I'm guessing you're going to bring this up again in the strategic plan meeting, since it looks to me like these are all positions that are not currently in our strategic plan. Um. You know, it, like park maintenance are temporary, but it, the proposal is to make them permanent, if I'm following you. Um, there's been a little bit of a shift with the planning department. We had talked about. Jim moving over and doing a code right in two years, and now it's sounding like it's a three or four year and then adding an extra position to the. A third position to the planning department, or technically a second, but Jim moves over into a different department. But functionally, it's an extra position that we hadn't included in the strategic plan before. An additional code enforcement officer that wasn't there, um, and then everything else you named. So what, I'm trying to remember, how many staff do we have right now in the city permanent, not temporary?
About eighty-eight full-time equivalents.
Okay. So it's just over a ten percent increase. And then. What? So for the proposed wellness center, how many additional staff would be running that facility?
That would be significantly more. Uh, Lisa, do you have the number on hand?
I do. Um, it would be about twenty full-time equivalents, but those would be funded by um, a district.
Okay, so we're talking. We're eighty-eight staff. This budget is proposing ten more. Hypothetically, but not actually in the numbers, right? Or some of them are in the numbers, actually.
Say that again to make sure I understand the question, please?
Yeah, thank you. That's good, because I want to make sure I understand the question. Okay. So this list that you named, the list of the ten staff. As proposed by city staff in order to meet the goals of the community. Those ten staff are any of those proposed staff members, I'm trying to remember. Some of them, but not all of them are in the line items. Is that right?
None of these positions are in this year's budget.
Okay, none of them. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. So none are in this year's. So you just have us looking into the future with this, which is great. Um, and then the wellness center would take. At least twenty more people. On top of all these other people.
Yes, and that's why they would need their own funding source, yes.
But that funding source would include all other parks and trails in addition to a wellness center?
It would depend on how we set that up. It could or it may not. Um, it depends on how we want to go out. Um, and this is probably something we'll have to decide in the next few months, is do we want a, just a recreation district? That's solely for the wellness center, so that, that goes out into the county. And then have an, it's an own, a separate parks and rec district for the city that's just within the city boundaries, or do we want to combine those two? Um, into one district that covers both. Um, but, so I guess the answer is it depends on how we set it up. But yes, it could be set up that way, or you could set them up separately. And the same can be said that for a tree district, you could try to roll that into one big district, or you could have. A separate tree, you'd have three, two or one, depending on how you want to set it up.
So it would be essentially potentially more than one parks district, one that's just for a wellness center and one that's for everything that's not a wellness center. Okay. So this, these, I just, I'm trying to keep track. So these ten positions plus the wellness center would be about a thirty-four percent increase in staff. From where we are right now. I'm just thinking out loud. So that's pretty significant. Um. Like, that's a significant increase. I just. I'm trying to think it out. And then for this list of um, trade-offs is what I'm going to call it, the trade-off list. Do you know what I'm referring to? The, okay, how did you all come up with this? How is this? Can you tell us a little bit about um, that process?
Soon as I find my mute button, I guess. Um, so. So really, these are the straightforward things that you can implement immediately without having to run anything through an election. Or um, come up with a different. Different way, let me go back to. So I can see what I'm talking about. Um. The moratorium on, on parks and trails is really not a strategy so much as it is, we're just out of people to maintain them. Like, we just can't do anymore right now. Um, if we added a new park or trail. I'm not sure there would be any maintenance for it. And so that, that is just a function of staff we don't currently have. Um. And I think a lot of that is the difficulty in, in. Um. In being able to hire seasonals right now, that's obviously a big uh, hit for the summer, for the mowing months, for the irrigation. Uh, but also just things like, we used to be able to use excess capacity in the streets department to help maintain trails. Uh, but we don't have excess capacity in the street department anymore. Um, or things you don't think about, guys that would usually be out maintaining a trail are the same guys that have to open graves. So if there's going to be a funeral in the cemetery, we have to stop any maintenance on trails or parks or anything else. And work in the cemetery to make sure that we meet those customers' needs. So there's just a lot of demands put on these guys. And there's just not enough of them to do it right now. So that's where that specific thing came from.
So it's almost like you have to rank like the jobs that city staff do. And out of all the jobs of importance, maintaining parks and trails is the like least important in terms of. I mean, and I don't mean that to sound like overly generalized or overly simplified, but that's like kind of how you have to do it.
I think adding more for them to maintain is the least important. Um, uh, maintaining what's there is still obviously important, but adding to that burden is what we don't want to do. Um, and because we are pretty, pretty well situated with current parklands and current trails. But I know there's a lot of connectivity that we'd like to do with our trails. Um, and if we can do that in a way that isn't maintenance-heavy. We can still go forward with those kinds of things, but anytime we're adding any additional feature that has any significant maintenance. There's just no manpower left to accomplish that maintenance.
So the reduced maintenance is more, well, it says reduce maintenance on current parks and trails, so it looks like that is. Also a lower priority than maybe some other things these same staff are doing.
It is because you can kind of spread it out. Instead of mowing once a week, you can mow every ten days. Um, like there's things you can do that won't have as big of an impact as someone not being able to flush their toilet. Um, and really, that's what it comes down to a lot, is do we take away from parks, uh, do we take away from streets and water and sewer? To do parts maintenance to help out, or do we let them stay on their primary task, which is a core, core function of the city?
Thank you for um, that information. And then. I think that's. It right now, there was some stuff that just seems new to me, like, um, like a lot of these jobs obviously are new, because we haven't talked about this before. Or the idea that um, the code rewrite was going to take two years is what we've been saying in strategic plan meetings, at least since I've been a commissioner. And now it sounds like it's getting bumped up to three or four years and moving. The idea that the code rewrite was gonna take two years is what we've been saying in strategic plan meetings, at least since I've been a commissioner, and now it sounds like it's getting bumped up to three or four years and moving into a different department. So some of that I was not really expecting to hear. Yeah, so I thought I would just share that. I don't know if you have anything you would say about the idea of moving Jim from one department to another, like why that makes sense, or?
Sure, I think some of it's just for accounting purposes, because what he's doing rewrite, he's not really in building or planning. So to keep that clean and knowing how much we're spending in those, we just move him under the city manager. So because really, the code rewrites the city manager function, kind of, because it's citywide. Affecting all the parts of it. So that's just a, it's just an accounting method. I can tell you, one of the reasons we're looking at it taking longer right now is because. As, as you guys have worked through the growth policy, we've been following along on the things that. Are important and want to be done. So when we're talking about code rewrite now, we're also talking about things like. Full subdivision regulation rewrite and an annexation policy rewrite and looking at. Zoning for the extraterrestrial, extraterrestrial jurisdictional area. So we're adding more than just code rewrite. Obviously, Matthew will be involved in a lot of that, too, but it will probably take. Again, more than just Matthew to get those things done. So some of that time that we weren't looking at previously. Is starting to take shape out of the growth policy, and I think there's gonna be a lot of other important documents. That people are gonna want to have looked at other than just the street ordinances.
Yeah, that's true. We know that's coming from the current draft. Absolutely. And then. So just to make sure I'm understanding, so the, this new growth policy that's gonna come before the commission in the next. Couple months, which is really exciting. To implement, to implement that, it will take Matthew and Jim and potentially this proposed. Deputy planner to replace Matthew, who will shift over. Is that right? And then we'll be getting somewhere to implement it in a reasonable timeframe.
Uh, that depends a lot on your definition of reasonable, but yes, it'll at least allow us to work on things, I think, in. As some manner where people can see progress.
Consistently. I guess what I mean by reasonable is like they'll just be consistent progress. I know that some projects will be bigger and some will be easy, low hanging fruit. Some strategies we're already implementing or have already implemented. While the draft has been written and some will be new ground. So. I, I have that in mind when I'm saying reasonable, I guess, is there's a big variation depending on the. Topic. Thank you. That's really helpful. I know that was a lot of questions, but it's really helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I'll just add, like, when you're looking at percent increases in city staff. I think a good example, we were talking about Kalispell a little earlier, so they're just over twenty thousand people, I think twenty three thousand. Their staff is about a hundred and eighty. FTE. So they're about a hundred FTE more than we are right now.
I'm thinking at this point, we're at the hour and a half mark almost. Would people like to take a five minute break and then before we go back? Into this and have more commissioner comments or. Before we move on to the line items.
Yes, please.
I think I'm just gonna say, let's take a five minute break. You got a timer, Mike, or somebody?
We will put a timer on screen.
Sounds good. Let's take a break, come back in five. Yes, we're back, Mike. Time's up.
We're ready if you are.
Okay, I'm ready. Before we move on, any more commissioner comments on? On the overview that we've had from Michael so far? Mr. Friedman, Mr. Maybe?
No. No, thanks.
Melissa?
Okay.
I'm good. Thanks, Quentin.
Yeah, thanks for, yeah, your input and stuff. Darrell, if you're, are you there? I'm sure you would have spoken up by now. Okay, I guess we'll move on, Michael. Thank you.
So that's the majority of what I have for you. We can look at some of the budget, like line items, if you like. Again, I broke those down for you on the slides by percentages, but I think it's interesting to just look at the, if we look at the first overall page, along with the blue banner on the top. Yep, that one. I think it gives you the best. Comparison between the years, so it goes back to FY eighteen and then up through FY twenty two. You can kind of see. Where our increases are coming from and where our, where our expenditures are increasing and where our revenue is increasing. You know, just. I think a good example is if you look at just taxes, taxes and assessments. In FY eighteen have gone from two point three billion to two point seven million, so that's about four hundred thousand. But if you look at personnel benefits, it's gone from three point five to four point five. That's a million dollars. So right there, you can see that it is a, just between those two items, there's a. Almost a six hundred thousand, somewhere over half a million dollar swap in available funds. And those are the kind of trends that are gonna continue. Again, we're talking general funds, so there's not much capital spent. Personnel and benefits are gonna cover by far. Most of our expenses. You can see it's four point five million out of six point six. And then we broke it down by expenditures by function, so you can look at what we spend on different. Categories within the city. Public safety is always gonna be the largest expenditure there, because that is. That is your twenty four hour manning. Now, I think. In this one, I'm not sure, Paige, do we put? Dispatch in the public safety budget?
They are not in the public safety budget.
So if you put dispatch under public safety, they're not under public safety because it's a separate fund that we go out to, so it's counted for differently. But if you count them under public safety, it's gonna be closer to three point eight million. Three point nine million, and it's so it's a, almost all the money in the general fund or a significant amount is gonna go towards your public safety, police, fire, dispatch. And that makes sense. They're the ones that are manned twenty four hours a day, so staffing costs are the most expensive for those. Again, you know, fires looking at a three, three person shift plus reserve now, if we can have them, it's because we've. We've done a series of. I would say creative financing to get more capability for not more money. The fire union has done a great job working with us on that. As far as they go, we have been highly utilizing our reserves, which is a significant savings to the city. Does offer some part time jobs to the community members. It also allows us to develop and train up replacements for when we have openings. So it's, it's worked out really great. Sometimes it's challenging to keep enough reserves in the, in the program, but that has been. I would say Chief McKenna has really done a great job, along with his union, of being. Really creative and coming up with ways to staff us up to four people to shift and have people for callback without. Adding significantly to the cost of personnel. So that's a great, great news story. And we do a lot of creative things like that through the budget that you'll see that often have more than one. More than one purpose or more than one benefit. I don't know if you've been out driving along Park Street or some of the areas and seen the no mow May signs. That's a, that's a doubly beneficial program for the city and for the environment. It's a program where you let certain areas, certain parks that we've cordoned off. We don't mow during the month of May, and that's for the pollinators, so for the bees to come in and be able to do their job. Well, that is awesome and a great way, I think, to help the environment. It also means that we're not paying anybody to mow those areas. So there's a practical side to that as well. And anytime that you can find ways to. Really find those synergy points where you're not only doing the things that help the community and help the environment, but you're doing things that help the city's budget. That's really, I mean, that's about as creative and as best of solution as you can find when you're accomplishing more than one goal at a time. And you'll see a lot of that. You know, and a lot of it's done by volunteers, whether that's the Parks and Trails Committee. Whether that's people out doing bike audits for us to determine where they think the bike, bike trail should go, because they're the users of the system. You know, if you, if you see Lyndy Gibson stopper and thank her, she's out painting all of the fire hydrants for the city. That's part of one of those facility maintenance things that I was talking about. We don't really have anybody to, to paint the fire hydrants, but she's been doing it on a volunteer basis, and. I don't know how many fire hydrants she's painted, but I bet you it's in the hundreds. And that's the kind of quality of citizen that we have in Livingston that is out there doing work. On a volunteer basis to save the city money. And those are, those are great programs that we utilize as much as we can. Which is why we've been able to accomplish as much as we have on the budget we have. So it's really a success story that we've gotten this far, just don't know how much further we can get. So that kind of gives you the overview. You can see the ending fund balance we talked about. The. It's interesting to look down at the reserves as a percent. You can see it was weighed out at twenty percent in FY eighteen. Excuse me, and then thirty percent in nineteen, forty three and twenty. And we're project, we're predicting forty in twenty one. A lot of that was affected by CARES Act funding, as it came in across several fiscal years, which is why we had those costs or had those reserve levels up that high. Which is, I mean, we used a great use of the money, but we've now brought that back down to our goal by spending it on some of the things that we chose to spend it on, so. You can look at that, you can see the. The cyclical nature there, but that was conscious choices by the commission that I think brought us right back to the level we needed to be at. As far as the actual line item goes, I won't dive down into anything specific unless there's some areas you would like to talk about. We already covered the, the significant changes. It was really just those two of moving Jim into the city manager section. And moving. Additional officer into the, the LPD. Can't think of anything else significant in the areas we've looked at. There's some anomalies, you'll see if you go to the planning section, and mine doesn't have a page number on it. Keep going. So you'll see that, it looks like we're saving a lot of money in planning. Seventeen percent reduction. What that really comes down to is, since we moved Jim out of there, and that is now Matthew's salary instead of Jim's. Matthew has served significantly fewer years in the city than Jim has, somewhere in the range of twenty five. So his longevity isn't nearly as high. So that's really what you see there. That's just a matter of. Of changing people into the positions. Now. One thing we didn't cover, Matthew was hired in as a deputy director of planning. As we move Jim out. Matthew will be moved up, because his performance has warranted it. He'll be moved up to the director of planning. With that will come a pay increase. So this, these savings will go away as we pay people what they are worth. In this case, and I don't think anybody that has gone through the growth, growth policy process or the. The zoning process that Matthew has worked on wouldn't say that he wasn't worth the money. He has been a stellar addition to the city and has accomplished quite a bit. But those things will. Obviously have to come out. Those obviously will be an additional cost in next year's budget, as he gets a pay raise commensurate with his position in the city. I think we've split things out, so it's a little easier to tell where money has actually been spent. You compared this to last year's or the year before, general fund. You'll see we've moved some light items, line items around to help it. Help people really understand where the money goes inside of the city, instead of having to. To figure it out from line items. You can see that in the swimming pool splash parks, under administrative services. We're spending almost seventy, a little over seventy five thousand dollars a year just in that, and that doesn't include the maintenance costs that are under a different section.
Can I interject for a minute?
Please.
I can't follow right now. I'm not sure where you're at, because there's no page number. So if you're. Just gonna ask you to maybe say the header number or something, since there's no page number, so and give us a chance to catch up.
Absolutely. So I was just talking splash park and pool, which is under four oh nine, which is administrative services. And it's on page twelve of the packet.
And my packet doesn't have numbers, so it's under.
Four oh nine.
Is it the first page of administrative or the second page of administrative?
It is the first page of administrative at the bottom. Swimming pool and splash park.
Thank you. Now, what were you saying about the swimming pool and splash park?
So you can see that while rec does bring in a lot of money, there's some very expensive programs in rec, and the swimming pool is one of them. It's almost, almost eighty thousand dollars just here in salaries and overtime. And this does not include the operations portions of the pool, right? So this is just salary. It doesn't include. heating, chemicals, boiler maintenance, all of that's in a different section of the budget. So that's probably one of the biggest functions that we do. While we charge for the pool, we never make what we spend on the pool. That would be better if we were a bigger, more efficient pool, but staffing is going to eat us up if we have a year-round versus a three-year model. And that's why that needs its own specific funding. If you go, go to four thirty-one, which is law enforcement. You can see in general, there's not anything significantly different than this. The main increase in cost is personnel down below. This does still include our Missouri River Drug Task Force Officer, which we do not have, but we help fund in the county sheriff's department. Where this differs from previous years, and we talked about this last year, was we now include their liability insurance under that heading. So you can see that the insurance costs that go with it, and they're significant for law enforcement, as you would expect.
So I don't know the best way to do this, but I actually do have line item questions, and I don't know. I'm a little confused if I should be asking now or if how you guys are doing.
Line item question, go right ahead.
Yeah, I, yeah, take any time, Melissa, you're ready to, that's why I said if you, you're ready, if you got questions on lines, feel free to speak up and go for it, and, and all of them is as well, that you have, and then we can go from there.
Do you, can you say that last part again, Quentin?
If you, if you've got questions on lines, go ahead and address them now. That's what I intended to do at the beginning of this anyway.
Okay.
So Mike, Michael's given us kind of an overview and stuff like that, so now's the time to go line by line as you see fit.
Do you want us to go through like by sections or something?
That's up to Mike.
Okay.
If you have questions, let's just start from the beginning and say, see what the first question is, and we'll just work through it that way.
I agree.
Okay. Do you want me to go first, Quentin, or what do you want?
Please go first.
Okay. So this is under the, it's on the second page under miscellaneous revenues. And there's two things that I have questions on. So it's like three, six, zero, 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 zero miscellaneous revenues. Yep, that's the section. Wait, is it? Yeah. So what is the Second Street eleven thousand one hundred?
That's the rent income that we get from the Second Street parking.
Okay.
And then the remaining rental income is from the state.
Okay, so that was mentioned earlier. Thank you. I just needed to write it down next to that. Thanks, Paige. And then what's the twenty thousand AMB West?
That's grant revenue that we're getting for the flag football program.
So that's the one that we heard about last year. I think it started last year, right? And then it just continuing?
Yep.
Okay.
Some of these notes are as much for me as for you guys.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I, that's helpful. I, I'm ready to go to the next page, Quentin, if you want me to keep. Okay. Okay, I'm just working through.
Hey, you, you have the floor, so just.
If other commissioners have questions too in these sections, I would, you know, be nice to.
Okay, yeah, they could check, yeah.
Okay, because I'm moving into the administrative section now. It's four oh three.
So commissioners, if you, you don't need to piggyback on anything Melissa's going through now, please do. We'll keep it kind of loose.
Thank you, Quentin. Okay, this is the page. So this, I had questions about the percentage increase, because it looks like an additional employee, and that is correct. It is Jim. Can you share why there's a hundred and fifty percent increase in overtime for this department and workers' comp? Like I'm a little, yeah, thanks.
I'm looking at the overtime cost right now, and that is Faith, because she's the only non-salaried employee in this, in this category. And what we found is, we asked her to work a lot of overtime, whether that is in meetings like this where she's, you know, staying late, whether it's the commission meetings, whether it's the other agenda prep stuff that she has to get done, and we just weren't budgeting enough for what we were actually asking her to work. So we increased that to actually meet the overtime hours that she meets. And that's even with flexing a lot of hours of coming in late or, you know, taking a half day here or there to make up, we still, she still works a lot of overtime. And so that's why that has increased.
Okay, and that's especially, it looks like, I'm trying to remember when Faith started. I don't have, I don't remember when Faith started. So is it in twenty twenty?
It was FY twenty eighteen, I think towards the end of it.
So this last year with COVID, her overtime went way up.
Yeah, I think with the amount of, especially Zoom meetings, because she was the expert at getting the Zoom meeting set up. If anybody had trouble, you know, with, whether that was Parks and Trails or historic preservation or whoever it was, she was doing a lot of helping other organizations get set up and run meetings.
So presumably, now that people are more familiar with Zoom and getting it figured out, Faith won't always have to be on call constantly. Fingers crossed she gets a break, right?
That would be helpful. Part of it's also our meetings have run significantly longer over the past year than they were the couple of years prior. And so anytime a meeting is longer, that's more overtime for her in that day.
Thank you. And then what about the workers' comp?
That's just an increase in our rate from the previous year, Melissa. It almost doubled, and, and an additional employee that's in this category.
So that's just like the cost of insurance, basically?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. It's like, did something really bad happen to our employees? No.
We actually had a big rate adjustment on our insurance mid-year, and a lot of our work comp rates went down, but this is one of the categories where our rate went up.
Thank you. All right. The next thing is this public relations, nine hundred percent includes float. Thank you.
That's exactly it.
So this is a new one, actually. I don't, hopefully not a lot of employees are listening tonight, because this is a program I haven't announced to them yet, but that we did, that we did budget for. One of the things that I think you probably read a lot about, at least I have, on the COVID is the, even on the employees that were essential workers and coming to work, there's been a lot of mental and emotional stress on those workers. So while we did have some of that public relations money is, is money we used for usually Christmas gifts or small items that we'd hand out, just in recognition of their service. This year, we got a little creative and looked for some resilience-building, stress-reducing items. And so in this case, I don't know if you've ever heard of the Float Pod, but we, yeah, in fact, I'll have, I'll have Faith bring it up for you. What we did is we reached out to a business in Bozeman and worked with them to create a, basically, treat the city of Livingston as a subscription client, so we'd have a year-long ability to use their services. And we're going to offer it basically one float a quarter for any city employees that wishes to use it. So they basically can combine a half a day off with a float session with, in New Wave, float therapy in Bozeman. So basically, it's a, I learned of it because it's used actually quite a bit in treating PTSD with, with combat soldiers coming back. They combined it with some medication for that point. But really, it's, if you're old school like me, you've probably heard it referred to as a sensory deprivation tank. It's a place where the, the water is close to your same temperature. It's like five times more salty than, than seawater, so you're buoyant. It is a light-free, sound-free environment if you wish it to be, although there are some options on that, and has proven fairly effective in stress reduction, which is why they're using it in the PTSD section. We talked about how we're not very competitive in a, a, a salary competition right now, especially with places like Bozeman. I think a good example of that is Bozeman is currently advertising for their deputy chief of police. I believe it starts at ninety-eight thousand and goes to a hundred and five thousand, which is more than either of our chiefs. So, one, to provide a, I guess, a, a benefit to the employees that will help with stress reduction and maintain, you know, some mental health, some emotional health as far as that goes, but also to provide a benefit that I think will be seen as valuable, especially by younger members of the, the city staff. I thought this was a good, a good, easy program that allowed anybody to use it at their own, their own time, their own level. We looked at a lot of options, whether that was discounts to massage therapy and other areas like that. But especially if you get into law enforcement or firefighters, there's a lot of people that don't like to be touched, especially in that kind of environment. And this is something that people can do on their own in private, and we don't have those kind of issues. So it was a, it is an attempt for what I think is not a very large amount of money to help with retention while at the same time focusing on the, the mental and emotional health of the staff.
Thanks for explaining that. I think, yeah, that's helpful. So it says public relations, but it's actually like staff support, for lack of better category.
It is. We didn't have a very descriptive line item that that fit into very well.
Yeah. So is that like COVID funds or some of those monies able to go to this sort of thing?
Not directly, because they're employee benefits, but really, it's just anything out of the general fund, obviously, kind of gets floated around through all of it. No, no pun intended.
I will say, I do think that that's important to support the mental health and self-care efforts of anyone during a time like this, but it's a good thing for employers to do, is a little extra during a time like this, when everybody's way more stressed out and probably going through trauma. Like you said, probably a lot of people are having trauma responses. And we don't talk about it.
Really inexpensive too, I might add. Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I mean, does this include commissioners? That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, it's, it's money well spent, I think.
I could use some sensory deprivation.
Yeah.
It's actually, as, as city employees, you could take advantage of it, actually. I have to give New Wave Therapy a lot of credit. They were very flexible in working with us. We, so it, it really goes, I think it's with the subscription, it's forty dollars a float. And you get a lot of free upgrades. You can go from the sixty-minute to the ninety-minute and, and use some other, other things as well. So that would be, that cost is only if all eighty-eight employees used every one of their available floats, which is probably unlikely. So it really is not a lot of money to spend, but I think just the, the goodwill of having that kind of program is well worth it.
Yeah. Okay, well, that explains what that was. Let's see. I'm going to keep moving through the list, Quentin. For things I don't recognize.
Yeah, that's okay. One year I found, you know, chaps and stuff like that. I go, what are we doing, riding horses or what?
I didn't see that one.
Well, no, yeah, that was just.
Okay.
Cutting down trees.
Um, I am to administrative services. It's four oh nine, and I'm on the first page of it. And I'm sure many of these things are things we've heard of. I just don't recognize the notes. So there's a four hundred percent change, and it says capital campaign. Can you remind us what that is, please?
Lisa, do you want to go ahead and explain that? I could take a swing at it, but I'd probably get something wrong.
Just unmuting. Sure. This is money that we have budgeted in case there were some grant holdups or issues with the Bannock Group, who has been doing some of the engagement and feasibility studies around a special district for the rec center. So that's, that's in there, and it may, may not be accessed at all or utilized at all, but it is in there in case we need it.
So it looks like no, well, five thousand was spent this year, but you held thirty thousand back, and then you're just carrying that over for next year, just as a, like an earmark, just in case, right? Is that, I'm following?
Essentially, yeah, essentially, yes. And other things can hit that professional services line item as well. Like if we, if we were to go to an arbitration and we engage a consultant for that process, some of that could potentially go there as well. So, but the bulk of it is the capital campaign.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I'm just going to keep scrolling through. Okay, I'm on the second page of administrative services. And there's a decrease in forty-seven percent. Can you remind us, it's at the very top line. So it looks like a forty-seven percent increase, decrease makes me think somebody moved out of a department.
This is, this is Paige. Lisa has already, has always been budgeted in this administrative services area, which is really the rec department, because her, her primary job is HR, and this is just secondary duty of hers. If you go to the previous page, you'll see that at the very top, I have moved her salary here.
Okay, so you're just moving HR to the appropriate category, basically?
Right, right. And this might be too much information, but when you see the top where it says four one zero, four five zero, the forty-one indicates general government, where the forty-six actually indicates, like recreational programs. And that's, that's an accounting, one of those strange accounting things.
No, I really appreciate that. It's not too much information. I mean, I, I don't need to like memorize that page, but I think that's like.
I don't memorize it either.
I think it's like helpful, because it's a, a big change. And so if people ask us, why didn't you ask about that big change? Now we can say, oh, we've asked. It's just moving Lisa into where she actually works. Paige is just moving over. So thank you. That makes total sense. And it's helpful. Just those big percentages catch my eye. Let's see. Okay, I'm moving to, can I keep going, Quentin? Are we still? I don't want to lose anybody. Okay. The next one is the facilities admin, admin. It just says facilities admin. Yep, thank you, Faith. So it says Star Road Flag Pole and Flags. So is the Star Road the plumbing debacle you mentioned earlier?
It is. The cleanup, as well as some improvements to turn it into our archives.
Okay. So it was like damages plus Reno or something?
Correct.
And then can you elaborate on the flags, since we have gotten like a hundred emails on that? What exactly those are referencing?
Sure. So that is just the set aside for any of the possible polls that the commission decides on. Some of them, like the Park Street one, that's for the flag poles and the poles, the flag poles and the flags for the new building, which are required. So that's set aside, and then the the twenty thousand is set aside for the park. If that becomes less, then that money just goes into the reserves available for whatever else we need.
Okay, so the eighteen thousand is for the three that are required at a city county building, and that's the new city hall. And then twenty thousand is to be determined. And so you said before it would go to office furniture, but now you're saying it's going to go to the general fund if the big flag is not purchased?
Right, because we'll probably be through this fiscal year, I guessing by the, so this is for next fiscal year. So we just moved it into the next fiscal year. We'll still spend the money on office furniture. It just will come out of the reserve, and then this will go back into the the general fund since we moved it into the next fiscal year.
And I mean, presumably for the whatever happens to a flagpole on the park, presumably it will need to be replaced, even if it's replaced with a like a like pole that's just undamaged. So that would be money spent towards whatever the community and the commission decides, right?
We estimate high, and that way, we have enough, no matter what the decision is. And then if they decide on something less than that, it just gets back into the general fund.
Okay, I just checking in because I know we've gotten quite, I still am getting questions if that decision has been made. I think I just got a question yesterday or something, if the decision on the flagpole has been made, so.
Well, and this
so
Then this is a really great example. So the cost for the Park Street flagpoles has already increased significantly. I don't know if it's due to shortages in materials or whatever, but that's probably going to be closer to twenty two or twenty three. So even if we spend less on the the park one, we now need to spend more on the ones on Park Street. So that money just basically gets shuffled back and forth to 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 cover whatever costs we need.
Okay. I'm still moving forward. Okay, so now I'm to law enforcement. It's four thirty one. It's a few pages. Oh, there it is, I think. Let me see if I'm on. Looks like there's two pages of law enforcement on the first page. So you already mentioned the overtime in your intro. So that question's answered, why overtime went up? Or why you're well, actually, overtime didn't go up. You're projecting it will go up. Right? Yeah.
Correct.
So overtime went down, but you're projecting it's going to go back up.
Right, and overtime isn't complete yet for FY twenty one. Obviously, we have through the end of June. So that number could still change. It probably will change. But yeah, the big, the big change for next fiscal year is that we're gonna have at least one officer out for the majority of the year on a guard deployment.
Okay, so that's why there'll be overtime is because somebody's doing another service.
Covered, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then on the other thing on this page was the, oh, the vehicles. So I feel like I remember seeing on the strategic plan vehicles, but this is a big percentage increase, four hundred and seventy five percent. Did you wanna? Are you able to share us some more info about that?
I am, but I'll actually let Dale talk to you, talk you through it so he can explain it from his point of view.
Thanks.
So, yeah, this year I'm looking to potentially replace two vehicles. One is just our standard patrol vehicle that we try to replace every year. The second one would be our canine vehicle. As of right now, we have three vehicles with over a hundred thousand miles on them. And our canine vehicle has eighty six thousand, plus it has idle hours of a significant amount of idle hours because the vehicle needs to run continually to keep the the climate safe for the dog. And as of right now, it's got, yeah, almost thirteen thousand idle hours on the vehicle. So it just wears them out quickly doing that. So we're looking to replace the patrol vehicle, just one, and then the canine vehicle. And last year, it was budgeted at twenty thousand because we took a lot of the funds from the oh, I'm having a hard time thinking of the thank you, impact fees. But a regular patrol vehicle runs right about fifty thousand dollars. Vehicle themselves, plus all of the upfitting, the radios, the radar, the lights, all that equipment. And then the canine vehicle with the climate control, the extra kennel for the dog and all the accessories for that, that bumps that one up even additional a little bit more.
Okay, Dale, so you're just saying the reason it looks so high is because last year was lower, that normally it's around fifty thousand. So it would just be all other things being equal, it would be just over like a hundred percent increase since it'd be two vehicles. But it just, it looks like almost five hundred percent increase because last year was just lower than normal.
Because a lot of them thirty thousand came out of the impact fees, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That's helpful here. And then you don't have to replace the canine vehicles every year, right? This is like you don't do two vehicles every year. So this is, it looks like an anomaly year potentially?
It is. Yeah, we typically, we do one a year. The canine vehicle is two thousand fourteen.
Okay. Thank you for, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah.
And just if I may, there's, there's another point to make here on impact fees. While we increased impact fees, and they're going to be significantly helpful in a lot of areas, we actually lost money in impact fees for the police department. Part of that is because they were in such a small space. They didn't, the maintenance cost in that space is so low that they actually reduced the amount we got in impact fees for the police department. All the other ones went up significantly. The police department went down, which is why we don't really have impact fees to use this year to offset that vehicle cost.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna keep going forward. So I don't remember what else I have marked. I think you already addressed the building inspector. That change. It looks like so that salary is going up, but it's basically the position, the proposed, thank you, Paige or Faith, I mean, thank you, Faith, I should have said where I was on the agenda. The salary is going up, but that is a reflection of the shift in job changes that you proposed. Okay, so this is the one, this would be the one job change then that was proposed in the list of ten that is reflected in a line item. No?
It is, it is reflected here, but that wasn't actually listed in that that list of ten. That was in the list of big changes for this year.
Okay, so that was not in this packet?
It was in this packet. It just wasn't in that table.
Okay, thank you.
Jim's salary has always been split between building and planning. So it was a percentage in here where this now reflects a full-time building inspector, which is why it increased so much.
That's what I was thinking, Paige. So he was like split between departments, and now right, this was only a percentage, and now it's like a whole position just building that's not split.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was thinking. Thank you for putting it into words for people who are not inside of our heads, which is nobody, hopefully, because that would be weird. I I asked a lot of questions, and I think that I have gone through my list. Thank you. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you, Melissa, because somebody has to do this.
Might as well be me.
It was your turn.
You know, there is one thing, Quentin, that stood out to me. And I don't know how it's explained in the line item, so maybe it'd be better if I just asked as a general question.
Please do.
Yeah, so I'm looking at this, the this sort of cover sheet. I'm gonna call it a cover sheet, the spreadsheet with the blue header. And I was just looking at the trends, like and sometimes they're useful and sometimes maybe they're less useful. But Michael, I was looking at the public works line. And the reason the public works line really stood out to me is because it's been relatively stable or it hasn't gone up, which surprised me since it's one of the biggest departments probably in the city in terms of staffing and responsibility. I'm imagining it's one of the bigger departments. I could be wrong. But um, I was surprised to see that that really is gone down more than it's gone up. And the other line that surprised me was the public health. That public health below it just is another one that doesn't, it's I'm surprised because we're coming off a pandemic year that it's the number is where it is. So I was hoping you could share the backstory of those two departments and why they look different than the other departments in that way.
Sure, I think the the public works one's a simple answer. This is almost none of the public works budget. This is just the public works function that falls in the general fund. Most, I mean, when we, when we talk like the when we talk the enterprise funds, there we go. We talk the enterprise funds, you're gonna, it's millions and millions of dollars, and most of that's capital. But this is just the public works functions that happen to fall into the into the general fund. And really, public health works the same way. That's sanitarian and a couple other little things. But the majority of public health dollars are expended by the county because the entire health department, except for the sanitarian, is paid for in the county. So that's where you would see, I would expect if you looked at their public health budget for last year, you would see significant increases because a lot of the money that they got in for CARES Act specifically for the health department all was accounted for underneath the county.
Okay, thank you. That's, I should have remembered that, and I didn't, and I'm appreciative for your kind response because, yes, public works has a ton of fees and our public health, who we pay is different than who the county pays. So thank you for that, for that reminder. We can compare it then to the enterprise funds when we get there. That was it, Quentin. Now I'm going on mute.
All right.
And Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, I would like to cover one more thing. That's me, like yeah, can you go, Faith, to the Roman crew page? So when we talked about, because I know a lot of times when we talk about parks and trails, people are like, well, how much does it cost? How much are we spending on parks and trails? Because a lot of times we only talk about the new projects, and it doesn't seem like very much money, right? Like we talked about twenty thousand dollars to do the PER for the ped bridge or you know, twenty thousand dollars to put in the new vault toilet or whatever it is, and they seem like small amounts of money. But when you actually look at what we spend on the roaming crew, we'll pull it up for you here in just a second. So it's basically four fifty five, which is roaming crew, which is second to the last page. Now, this will include some things that aren't strictly parks, like cemetery operating and some other things. But if you go down to the bottom of that column, roaming crew operating is is three hundred and eighty two thousand, which is significant. But now, if you go to the next page, you can see there's still another hundred and ninety one thousand in parks operating. And when you throw in the swimming pool in the splash park, remember I said earlier, the swimming pool number didn't include some of the maintenance items? This is where you find those maintenance items for chemicals and operating supplies and the like. You can see that we spend over six hundred thousand dollars on the roaming crew. So that's really when you're thinking about parks and trails, that is what we're spending on maintenance. Now, it's not just parks and trails, it's swimming pool and cemetery as well. But if you lump those items together, it's well over half a million dollars on maintenance. And that's why when we, when we look at things not to add money to, that's a significant amount, right? Like if you compare that to some of the other things that we, we spend money on, if I can find something. And well, it falls in a bunch of those, but you know, it's it's, it's a lot of money to spend on on maintenance and increasing that is, makes it tough. And that's just you know, that's just the what we're currently doing. So every anytime you increase that, it just gets worse. And because we're at the point where we probably can't increase it much without hiring another full staff. Right? Like you get the you hire a new staff and you have his whole potential, their whole potential. And then as they get tasks and then we add stuff, that potential shrinks. And pretty soon you get to the point where the next one thing you want to do is another whole staff person. And that's a significant increase. So that's just a a number I wanted to throw out there. So when we're talking about slowing down on parks and trails, it's because we are spending a significant amount on that. You don't see that in the parks and trails budget because a lot of it is the roaming crew staff and their time. But that's what, that's what it takes to maintain parks and trails is time of the staff. It's either out there mowing or out there improving, you know, improving a trail or doing the, setting up the irrigation for the year or shutting it down for the year or whatever else it is that they need to get done throughout the year. So I just wanted to point that out because a lot of times people ask that question. And when I say it's over six hundred thousand dollars, they just they're amazed that it's that much that we're spending per year on that kind of maintenance. So thank you.
How many people is that?
You have to include the seasonals into it. Shannon or Lisa, you can answer this one. But it's
That's for four full-time employees and four seasonal employees for our salary and wages. And just to add to what Mike was just talking about, we we put in more than six hundred and forty thousand dollars in into our parks and trails. You know, just like he described earlier on the spring cleanup, which is really just a huge collaboration of of many departments in public works. We couldn't maintain all the trails without help from the street department, or we couldn't replace trees without their assistance. Certainly, the the water in the sewer part departments help with cleaning vault toilets and and making sure sprinkler systems are functioning properly. So it's, you know, it's, it's again, a really a collaborative effort with all the departments. And we couldn't do large projects like ash tree removal projects without the assistance from other departments.
Thanks, Shannon. Okay, where do you think we're at at this? I'm looking for commissioner comments at this point. Mel, do you have anything? Mr. Maybe?
Well, I just want to point out that if you go to Google, everybody's favorite reference. Bozeman just bought a a recently built and went out of business range called Zero In Range. All the information is on Google, but I'm gonna guess it costs the the business something like either three or six million dollars to to build it. And I don't think they lasted a year or two. But the city of Bozeman just bought it, bought the building and a lot of parking area around it. And the I believe it's going to be used by the sheriff's department and other law enforcement. And they had been talking for years about building a fourteen or fifteen million dollar center for those departments. And they now have it for either three or six. And that's before building went crazy. The cost of building went crazy. So I just want to point out that I think we're pretty fortunate to have acquired a building A, before things went crazy and following Bozeman, or no, we didn't follow Bozeman, but Bozeman's example shows what kind of savings can be made by purchasing an existing building. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. And the other commissioner comments?
I'll say something. Thanks, you guys. Sorry about being in and out, but I tried to listen as much as I could. Good point, Warren, as well as thank you, Melissa. I heard like the last of your questions. Michael, I will I have some questions, but I will wait to ask you kind of individually and then bring up any concerns related to it at a future meeting. I, yeah, I still think, like going back to my main point earlier about solutions, I'm always about offer, offering people some options, and I'd like to see some different options. I'm always about offer, offering people some options, and I'd like to see some different options along the way, as far as ways for us to still have a tight budget, keep our our reserve, and yet now serve our city in a way that we know is kind of coming to us. It, whether we like it or not, or whether people like the growth or not, we are having fast growth that needs to also be considered in how we deal with funding that fast growth or the, and the services that we offer as a city. So, looking at options, looking at solutions, and thanks for the great information tonight. I think everyone had real, really solid, or the staff, meaning the staff had really solid information in the the document was great, shortened to the point, yet understandable. So, thank you.
I still, I think you're still muted there, Commissioner Schwartz.
Man of charity, as you're back in line, you want to take over the meeting, please?
Do I want to take over? Nope, you finish up. We're almost done, it looks like, since you're already, you already have.
I'm getting close to calling for adjournment, unless somebody.
Well, I.
Unless I'm missing something here.
Quentin, I'll jump in.
Okay, please.
Comments. I think that, you know, I've had, I probably have a little bit of I have a little bit of advantage with the growth policy that I've been looking at it over and over and over since October, and listening to all of the comments for hours and hours. So I can I think that we have a lot of discussions that we're gonna need to have as it pertains to solutions. I can just tell you, I think that mill levies or special, what are they called? There's like a, there's a city lingo.
Special districts?
That's it. It's like a, there's an acronym for it, right? Can't think of the acronym for the special districts. Doesn't matter, tax improvement, something, I can't remember. The special districts is the point. I think that, that's probably one of the strategies that we're gonna see pop up for different categories in the growth policy. I do think that we're gonna have challenges as a commission to make these decisions, because I think we're coming to a point probably where there's gonna be tension between well, just like Michael's already named, tension between what's possible from the staff and what the community wants. So we're gonna have to really navigate that thoughtfully, and really take into consideration the, I think it's like fifteen hundred comments that built the growth policy and the hours and hours of public meetings. And that includes all of these potential, thirty new potential staff positions. Thinking, you know, hearing Michael talk about the cost for the roaming crew, it just being over six hundred thousand dollars, and then imagining twenty staff for a potential wellness center. I mean, it's only for full-time staff and for part-time temporary staff for that sixty, for that six hundred thousand, and we're talking twenty full-time for the wellness center. I think we're gonna have some important, big conversations coming up about what things actually cost. You know, we're gonna have to get real in Livingston, thinking about what are we actually paying for? How much is our current service cost, and what will it cost to expand in a certain ways? So I just wanted to highlight that. And that's all that I have.
Is our RBG bark in there?
Yes, she's fiscally responsible, that dog. He likes to think about budgets.
Yeah, good call. Yeah, it, it all depends, you know, what the community wants, what they're willing to spend, what they're willing to pay for. You know, everything has a price. So, those are things that everybody has to weigh and, and think about. It's not be beyond basic services and stuff like that.
And I, just to end on a positive note too, Quentin, I do think that there's overlap between what we're seeing from the staff and what we're seeing. There is like, the Venn diagram will have overlap between staff and community.
Absolutely.
We're, it's gonna be manageable. It's just gonna take some time to figure it out.
And I, at this point, I want to compliment the staff on, I'm putting this together, a lot of work in it. As I've said before, since I've been on the commission, this is so much more understandable than it has been in the past. And it's, as far as I, it, it's only gotten better, and I appreciate that. I thank you. Any other additional staff comments at this point? Commissioner comments? Okay, well, we have meeting tomorrow evening as well. So, at this point, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Warren. Hey, Mel, you're muted. Second me, second.
He seconded.
Okay, I saw his lips move, okay. All favor I?
Aye.
Aye.
See you tomorrow evening at five thirty.